Okay, I'd like to, at seven o'clock, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, number one.
Commissioner Jablonski will not be here this evening. She had a medical procedure today, and she thought she'd be able to make it, but she was not able to make it here. She called me up about an hour ago. Okay, the minutes of August 6th. Meeting, do we have a approval to approve the minutes of August 6th?
That's a move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the minutes?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The financial report and authorization for the disbursement of the funds, do we have a motion to accept the financial report?
That's a move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Mr. Ken Benner. I believe Mr. Ken Benner is up tonight. Severn Trank Services is going to give us our reports for June and July.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good morning, sir.
Doing well, thank you. Thank you for letting me come and give you a status report on your water and wastewater treatment facilities and collection distribution systems. June was a very good month, just like to give you some numbers with you. I have a new, this is a new, this report I'm providing you is a new formatted report. We call this our gold standard. So I'll just share that with you. It's the gold standard.
You said gold standard?
Gold standard.
Okay.
This is my, Severn Trank just came up with this. So this is the first time I've, not the first time I've given you a report, but the first time I've used this format.
It's very nice, actually.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, June was a good month. We had a BOD average of four going out of the facility in wastewater plant. Total suspended solids are 2.1. Excellent. That total nitrogen error is 0.6, the typo, it should be 1.6 milligram per liter. Just want to bring that out to your attention. And the flours leaving the facility was 0.07 milligram per liter. So another month of outstanding numbers, outstanding numbers. One of the things that we were able to accomplish was pretty important was the, we started seeing a slight increase in the E coli numbers. And the, we, you know, we investigated and determined that the existing chlorine contact tank from the old facility is still being used today. So the effluent from the new facility goes through parts of the old treatment plant. And so we pumped it down and cleaned it out and found that it had accumulation in there, and that was causing some of the elevated numbers. They never got high, but they were just starting to get higher than normal. So that was a good thing. So we got that resolved. The, some of the other highlights I wanted to share with you was that with the dryers, the biotholes, the sludge dryer, thermal dryer, we had some problems with what's called a thermal couple. And this thermal couple controls automatically the operation of the dryer itself. When you achieve your desired temperature, it actually shuts everything down. And it's one of several controlling devices. So anyway, we had to replace that thermal couple, and we actually had about four loads of material that did not meet the 90% requirement. So we have that separated, and we'll hold that to the landfill, to the county landfill, that didn't meet that 90%. Couple of other things, I included a, I want to let you know that we, at the water treatment plant, we're starting, we're prepping the water tanks, the filters and the tanks because it's, you know, the water plant's getting some years on it. I don't think it's like 25 years old or 28 years old. So we started painting, scraping some of the rust away in some areas and trying to get that dressed up. One thing I included in the, is I wanted, I included these, some charts, some pressure charts, I just wanted to share with you. We have a, what's called a pressure recorder, and we can hook it up anywhere in the distribution system, and it will digitally, excuse me, record the pressure everywhere. And then we can download it, and we can get a printout of the exact pressure from the moment we put it on to the moment we come on. Anyway, I included some pressure charts. I included one where that we had the Deluxe Inn motel, and we were having a lot of problems with pressure there. And I show you the chart before and then after the, we, along with DPW, made changes in the distribution system to improve the pressure. So, you know, we were getting complaints that Deluxe, Deluxe Inn, that people could, there wasn't enough pressure for people to take showers, it was that bad. And so we went from 32 PSI to 65, 70 PSI.
Wow.
From the changes that we made. Also, I included charts on the Patriots Glen, where the pressure actually would drop down to 15 PSI, 20 PSI. And after the, we made some changes there, now we're averaging around 40, 42 PSI. And that's in, at the highest elevation in Patriots Glen. So I think that's significant.
Yes.
So I also sent you guys a proposal to make those changes permanent. So I'd like you to look at, I sent them to you, I emailed them to you to consider. It's a bidirectional altitude valve. It would go on the bottom of Bell Hill Tower. It's a 12-inch, and it's a bidirectional, which means that it will, when Bell Hill Tower becomes full, it would close, and it would prevent Bell Hill Tower from overflowing. And right now, we're trying to manually control that, okay? But this would do it automatically. And then, of course, when the pressure, on the suction side of the valve, on the pump side, it, pressure would go down, it would open up and then supply water on the suction side. And Bell Hill Tower has what they call two feeds, they got an inlet feed and they got an outlet feed, which makes this an ideal location. We have a bidirectional altitude valve on Blue Ball Tower. It's not uncommon, and, you know, they're used all the time in the water industry. So it's something to consider. I strongly recommend it because right now, you know, the improvements that we've made have, you know, we wanted to assimilate this before we actually recommended spending this money to do this valve. For various reasons, because when you make changes to the system, you want to make sure that, you know, the outcome is what you want. And so we wanted to do it for a period of time, make sure the water quality was not affected, and that type of thing. So, you know, we've been doing it now for about two months. Actually, I know you, I know you're aware of the mayor, because we only had this conversation, but when we went, when we, right when we put the tower back online was right about when the municipal league convention was going on. And I was down at the municipal league convention this year, and when I got back that, after that weekend, I had numerous complaints, from pressure complaints, from people that lived in Patriots Glen. And I guess what happened was that when we had taken the tower offline to paint, we set it up, the pressure was so good that when we put the tower back online, a lot of the residents were not satisfied with that low pressure. So we've been, we've been working with it, trying different things to resolve this issue. I know that in the past, some of the residents have their own booster pumps, but I personally don't think that's the answer. I think what we've got now for you to consider is the answer.
Okay.
So anyway, but that's about it. That's all I really have for you this week and month.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for Ken?
Did you increase the PSI by volume, because of volume? How did you increase the PSI?
Where at?
When you said you went from, I think it was 15 to 36?
In Patriots Glen, right?
Yeah, Patriots Glen.
Okay. What we did was, it's a pretty, this is a pretty deep story, okay? Let me explain it to you. Let me start out by telling you that Washington Woods community, okay, they don't, they don't get their water out of, from a tower or from a pressure tank, okay? Like most of the town gets the water from Blue Ball, or Bell Hill, or Walnut Tower, or Thompson Tower. Washington Woods gets their water from a booster station, booster pumps, that run 24/7, seven days a week, okay? Now, that's not really unusual. A lot of times, that's the way, it's depending on, you know, conditions, that's what it's done, it's how it's engineered. And that's how Washington Woods is engineered. And so when I came to work for you guys, it's been, I've been with you now over six years, right? And I looked at Washington, when I toured the facilities, and I looked at Washington Woods, and I'm like, I got two, there's three booster pumps at Washington Woods. And when I first got here, two pumps were running continually. You had a small one and a large pump on 24 hours a day, right? And I said, is this normal? And yes, it was, it is normal, it was normal. And then, as the years went on, several years later, when the town, when it developed Hickory Knoll, they added that on to Washington Woods Booster Station. And at that time, the small pump and the large pump was no longer adequate to maintain pressure to both of these communities. So we had to start running the two larger pumps, okay? So that was some concern to me, because I'm thinking, well, if I lose a larger pump and I only have a smaller one to go back to, I'm going to be, I'm not going to be able to supply adequate pressure and flow to the communities, to both Hickory Knoll and Washington Woods. So, and one of the reasons the two pumps were required is because Washington Woods gets their water from, guess where? Bell Hill Tower. Yes. And so when Bell Hill Tower is online, the suction pressure at Washington Woods is very low. It's very low. So the pumps don't pump, they're pumping at a real low suction pressure, so they're not really pumping at capacity. It's pretty complicated.
I would say.
So anyway, but to make a long story short, when we took out, took Bell Hill Tower off to be painted, right? We had to set it up so that we could still supply water to the Bell Hill service area. And the way we did that is we have a booster station at the reservoir that pumps from the reservoir to Bell Hill. So we set, we set the pumps up to, one would run continually to supply water to Patriots Glen, and to the Meadows, to all the service area that Bell Hill Tower would, with one pump running. And then, in case of a fire, we set the controls up so that the backup pump then, at the booster station, would come on, and you would get about 1,200 to 1,500 gallon a minute, 1,500 gallon a minute, for fire protection to all these communities. And that's how we operated with Bell Hill Tower offline for six months, right? So when, okay, so what we found out, when we did that, when we ran one pump at the reservoir, right? We found that we didn't have to run both pumps at Washington Woods, we were able to run it with one pump. So, which is a good thing. So right now, we're running one pump at the reservoir, at the Bell Hill Booster Station, and one pump at Washington Woods.
Without increased volume, then?
Well, you are getting increased volume, because really, because you have better pressure.
So there's more water being?
Absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely. So that's, that's basically how we achieved that.
Ken, has there been, and I guess I'm going to ask this question, in the event of a fire, has, has there been any communication from, whether the fire company, or I'll even say, do we call, does the police, or the fire company call you to try to increase that flow a little bit at the plant?
Okay, that's a great question.
Is that something that we should try to do?
Absolutely. And all the time, it doesn't happen, okay? But I'll give you, for instance, okay, about three or four months ago, we had a fire down near, across the street from Redmond's, in those, in the, in the, those homes across the street, I can't remember the name of that community there, they're just townhouses. And at that time, Mayor Fasuna was on that site, and there, that was, that's been a real pressure area, okay? And he called me personally, he said, Ken, he said, we are fighting a fire down here, and we don't have adequate pressure. And I said, okay, all right, Mayor, I'll get, come right in. So fortunately, one of my operators that was working at the wastewater plant that evening was also trained at the water plant. So I called him up, and he was able to go to the water plant immediately and turn the plant on. So when the water plant's running, your pressures all go away, basically. But it's when the plant shuts down, and you're off, you're, but, okay, so that's the answer to your question, that was one instance where we did get called in, but many times, we don't get called in, which I think we should be called in.
Chief, is that something that maybe we can put as a priority, that when we have a fire, to make sure that we?
I think the fire department already usually does that, if they need pressure. I don't know that they always?
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, but.
I think it's up to whoever's the fire grand commander, we, you know, make that determination. I believe that we don't, we have Department of Emergency Services.
Okay. I'll reach out to them.
Things are a lot better, though, you know, that's, the whole point is that, you know, fire protection is key. It is very, you know, you can't say that enough. And that area there, across the street from Redmond's now, is, we put them on a different zone, we put them on the Thompson Tower zone. So now, instead of like 30 PSI, they've got 60 PSI. We doubled their fire protection, and we doubled their pressure. And also, at the fire department, the fire, singular fire department had terrible pressure because they were, because what was happening was, everybody was, although, most of the entire town was getting their water from Blue Ball Tower. And that's the way it was originally set up. And as the town grew, they didn't change that, and it was just too much of an area, too large of an area for Blue Ball to cover. So when they added, when the town grew, and they added on different zones, like Thompson Tower, or Walnut Tower, or Bell Hill Tower, they, you know, they went with the same boundaries, they didn't change the boundaries. So what, we've been working with the town, and we've been changing those boundaries. So now, Walnut Tower now is a higher pressure zone, it's taking care of singular, singular fire department. So now, they could fill their tanker probably in 15 minutes, instead of two hours. I mean, it's a big, big, big difference. So it's all, it's all good.
Very good.
So, you know, one thing I'd like to see is that, you know, we just put, when we put that PRV valve on North Street, right, I was a little disappointed that they put a 3-inch PRV on that 6-inch line, I don't agree with that. It should have been a 8-inch PRV. But the town can go back and, that way, if there's a fire downtown, for instance, right, if you have a fire at the hospital, or if you have a fire in the businesses downtown, this, instead of, right now, you've got a 3-inch PRV on the 6-inch main, that you're, and what you need is an 8-inch PRV on that 6-inch main, which would open up, and you'd get full flow from Walnut Tower in case of an emergency. I'll tell you, if I talked to the fire chief, he would love that, love that. But that's my recommendation on that.
Ken, my direct question, sorry, is, are the water, or is the water consumption going to go up in Patriots Glen because of the added volume?
Added pressure?
With the added pressure?
Yes, absolutely.
So they're going to go, those rates for those residents will go up slightly because you have?
Because, absolutely, the people's.
You increase the pressure by adding volume?
That's right.
That's what my question was. Okay, thank you.
Well, when you add, increase the pressure, you're adding, or you're increasing the volume.
If you go into a reduction to increase pressure, you increased it by volume?
That's right.
That was, that was my question.
That's right. So, you know, people that have a higher pressure actually use, where we use more water than someone with a lower pressure. So you have, if you have residents that, in town, like at Patriots Glen, and their pressure was like 25 or 20 PSI, that's way too low. You know, it should be at least around 40 PSI. Because, you know, when your pressure's at 25, 20, you can even use a hose, I mean, it just comes out of your faucet, you could, so.
Very good. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ken administrators' report. Louis, you were on.
The first item I have is the raceway settlement removal project. This is the second time we bid it out, and this time, we received envelopes from five different organizations. I assume they're bids, but I won't make that presumption, so I open the envelope. First one is from Brightfields Incorporated in Wilmington, Delaware.
Louis, what was the budgeted amount for this?
300 and some thousand. We have 224,000 from CDBG grant, so the other 25% is ours, so it's about 350 grand. Their total bid price, including contingency, is 201,825 dollars and 48 cents. 201,825 and 48 cents. I don't know where they got the 48 cents from, but it's supposed to be a shovel endorsement. That might be the difference. The next bid is from Eastern State Construction Service out of Wilmington. Their total bid price is 222,900 dollars and zero cents. Next bid's from JJID, also, I heard, no, Bear, Delaware. James Julian, I thought he was Wilmington, but Bear, Delaware. JJID bids 318,872 dollars. Rebold Construction LLC out of Bear, Delaware bids 222,224 dollars. That's the end of the bids. Centagro declined the bid. So we have four bids from Brightfield, Eastern State Construction Service, JJID, and Rebold Construction. Tentatively, I would recommend the Brightfields, Inc. at 201,825 dollars and 48 cents contingent on our checks and references. And we also would check the D-Board list with the Department of Housing Community Development.
We have a motion to accept.
That's a move.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion in regard?
Have we ever used any, I mean, Brightfields, have we used them before?
I've never heard of them. I don't know.
I know Eastern State Construction.
So we'll, we'll check on them, check their experience. I just don't know.
Louis, let me ask you something.
Other companies I know.
You were talking about the state grant, and since this is way under the state grant amount, what happens with that amount of money?
The state will pay 75% of the cost, whatever the end cost is, and we'll pay 25%, so it's, they'll pay less and we'll pay less.
Very good. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion answered.
Next item I have is the, as the board is maybe aware, we had an incident in January 14th, where, of this year, where, in Peterville, you're at the Zebu and Hollingsworth House, Hollingsworth, I mean, Historic Elk Landing. And of course, we filed a claim, and they dried everything out and everything, but we have a mold problem down there. Pursuant, I obtained two bids for companies to perform mold remediation program down there so we can clean that mold up, the mold remediation in the basement, first, second, and third floor, and the, I guess, the west side of the house, more or less that was affected. Once the work is completed, then we have a company come in, Major Zero Quality Services, our consultants, and they do a check to find, see if there's a decline, hopefully, in the spore content in the building. So we had, we had that done before, and we'll have it done afterwards. The bids that are received from B&amp;M Clean out of, where are they from? Fallston, Maryland, and also from a company, Atlantic Environmental Solutions. Atlantic Environmental Solutions agreed to perform all the work that we discussed at the site during field visit for a total price of 9,950 dollars. And of course, B&amp;M, they went 17,895. So I would recommend that we, we contract with Atlantic Environmental Solutions, and I can commence that mold remediation as soon as possible.
Which one you say was out of Fallston?
The Fallston group is B&amp;M Clean.
Do we have a motion to accept the Atlantic Environmental for 9,950 dollars to get this project underway?
That's a move.
Have a motion? And a second, any discussion?
Yes. What is the insurance paying? How much does this be an offset to what the tax pay?
The insurance, the insurance has paid $15,000 for the work. And if they complete this work without any change orders, it will be?
It will be under?
5,500 dollars less than the claim. So, I don't know if we send it back or not, I don't know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's the business I had.
Do we have any old business? Charlie, any old business?
The old business, I guess, the last time we were here, I brought up the subject of improvement or enhancement of safety along the Boys and Girls Club on High Street, so I'll put that in your hands, because there is some discussion.
Very good. I think that the chief had sent us all an email today in regards to some signage that we could place, and actually, I think your recommendation was in two locations.
Yeah, just because of proximity, the other crosswalk is, you know, right down the street, kind of thing, if you're going to do it, might as well do both. And you have kids crossing there, I'm sure, as well as you do up by the Boys and Girls Club.
The, looking at the photographs, and actually, Commissioner Vanderen brought this comment up, how come the signage is so high? Is that, is that signage, is that?
The signs that are posted?
Yeah, the actual signs.
Yeah, they're posted to a standard, the state standard, so somebody didn't put their head on it, something like that.
So what is, is that?
It's pretty darn high.
Ah, you're right.
By the way, I'm in my Tahoe, and I'm still looking up at them.
It's pretty high.
So I, we should get two of these and put them in. I don't think it takes that long to get them, does it?
And I think that you said that?
Dan, Dan from DPW actually investigated the sign, and I.
Are we going to, are we going to need more of them with the senior center across the street coming in?
It's a double, it's a double in size, so I think two will probably work. I'll probably buy four in case, you know, we plow them off.
True.
So are there any, any issues with the board for us to go ahead and inquire those?
That's a good idea.
Do you need a motion or anything, Louis, on that?
No.
All right, great. Let's just get a ticket here. Anything else, Charlie? DJ, any, any old business?
Just a couple of things.
Yep.
While Ken's here, we had talked, probably two months ago, about a valve replacement, or an addition valve to the pond, that was going to be about 12,000 dollars, to be taking water from a pond instead of the river when it's, when it's raining and such. Where do we stand on all that?
You're talking about the gate valves at the twin pipes?
I think it's, is that right?
That's the only valves there are. So that's, that's what we're talking about. The, we had a contract, a manufacturer come in to look, but they couldn't see the head wall or pipes adequately to give us any recommendations. So I had to apply for a permit from the Maryland Department of Environment to modify the permit that we already have in order to draw down the raceway in order to inspect the pipes and head wall. Matter of fact, I just got it last Friday, I got the permit. So we'll line up, we'll line up a, you know, process to put a call for dam in and draw it down so we can inspect it and do the inspection.
And after that, then, I know the board had talked about combining ponds. Where do we stand on all that also, Mayor? Where do we stand on all that also there?
Did you, I'm sorry?
On combining the ponds? Remember, we had talked about that at a, it was either a meeting or a workshop?
Yeah, I think it was a workshop. We haven't, uh, I haven't advanced that as a project yet. We, we don't know what that involves, but we haven't, we wanna get the dredging done first.
I'd say, once we get that dredging done, I, I agree, I agree. I think it, it made a lot of sense at that workshop of connecting, uh, all those together in some manner, and I think it, uh, makes a little bit of sense. So let's get the dredging project done, and we'll hope hit that thing.
Uh, that's all I have for old business.
All right. Uh, let's see. I'll give you my report real quickly. Last week, I attended, uh, a meeting, uh, for the Community Development Block Grant Group in Berlin, Maryland. Uh, the town of Elton was awarded, uh, an additional, over, a little over four hundred and forty thousand dollars to take care of our last water tower, uh, which is the Walnut Hill Tower. Is that track loop?
Yes.
And, uh, this will, uh, through the Community Development Block Grant, uh, the town has received enough money to refurb, uh, all four, uh, towers in the town of Elton, so we're, we're in great shape from that perspective. The bad news was, is we received notice, uh, two or three days ago that, uh, our, our level, our, uh, LOV-
Area-wide Lumont Income Status has changed.
Has changed, so, uh, we will not be, uh, we will actually not be, uh, able to apply for any of these grants, uh, until the other, the next period of time comes that they check the statistics again, uh, for an area-wide project, uh, like water towers. It's good and it's bad, I guess. The, uh, I met with the MTA, the Maryland Transit Authority, uh, to discuss the train station last week, and, uh, things are moving along. Uh, what we're gonna have to do as a board, we're not, currently, uh, the, the train station is not in the funding process, uh, so for us to get, uh, the train station to move forward on the funding process, uh, we would have to commit to, uh, fifty percent, uh, of the funding amount to get it started, which, uh, is about, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And, and that amount of money, uh, now, we could, uh, attempt to try to get some assistance from the county, we could, uh, attempt to try to get some assistance from the college, uh, but what it was recommended to be, at some point, we need to budget, uh, maybe forty thousand dollars for the next three years to get us on the books, which would take us into six-year process. And, uh, that process, uh, once it's committed, uh, the train station costs are over twenty million dollars to get this project underway. And the goal and the hope would be to, uh, work with, uh, the Will Mapco Group to, uh, get a tiger funding, uh, on this. And, uh, so there's, there's a lot of legs to it, and, uh, I'll make sure that I, I get to the board all these facts and details, uh, as, as they were presented to me. But at this point right now, we would have to budget in next year's budget at least forty thousand dollars if we wanna make this project move forward. Uh, so I just wanted to kind of put that in everyone's ears today, that, uh, that's what we would have to do. We wouldn't have to spend that money, but the state wants us to put money away, and then, if the project takes all seven or eight years ago, then they knew that we had our money put aside to move the-
Project for, good faith money.
Yes. That's exactly what it is.
The, the twenty million dollars that it will take, twenty or twenty-two million?
Uh, it was over twenty million. I don't know the exact, uh-
Amount, but it was-
What's the bill?
Well, it's the cost to the town for twenty million dollars, but the hope would be, you would get a, uh, some tiger funding, what, uh, federal funding to make that happen.
If this comes to fruition, uh, exactly where would the location be?
The location on the, uh, train station feasibility plan that they, uh, gave to us that day, uh, would be connected to the, the rear of the railroad station, uh, college property, you know, actually behind the Cecil Community College as well.
And the reason why I said I, I believe one of the prerequisites would be the fact that you need parking. So I don't know if you would tie what Cecil has over, if the parking is over there, you have none anywhere else, so I don't know what, talked about when that came about as well.
Yeah, the, uh, it was made very clear to me that our project wouldn't move forward until the facilities project, uh, would be completed. And the facilities project is the, uh, area where they would, uh, rebuild, rehab, wash, uh, the, the marked trains. And, uh, that is targeted to be, uh, located, uh, in, in the, uh, western part of the county at this point, and the completion date on that would be sometime around two thousand nineteen. So our project couldn't even start until that project is completed.
Right.
Uh, but as I said, there's a lot of legs to it. Gene Minter actually has, uh, the, the feasibility study catalogs for everybody if, uh, you wanna take a look at them. It's actually great information in there, there's a lot of information. I would love to have that facilities here in Elton, but I'm not sure exactly where we would have any land to be able to put that, but it's gonna be, uh, creating a lot of jobs, uh, probably hundreds of jobs, actually.
Out in western Maryland?
No, out, out in western, uh, Cecil County.
Okay.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a big, actually, it's a, it's a big boom, actually. Uh, I'd love to have it here in town of Elton, but I don't think, I don't think we could pull that one off yet. We're trying. The, uh, I actually spoke to, uh, Dan and, and Louis and, and Steve today a little bit about the, uh, moving, trying to attempt to move forward with the, the meter, meters in the homes to, uh, take a look at them, reband them, and, uh, do our, our water audit, and at some point, we have to start moving forward with that project. I know we're, we're short on help, but I think it's very important for us to, uh, get moving on that as soon as we can. So hopefully, maybe by our next meeting, we'll actually have a, a game plan in place. And I, I think it's very important that maybe Steve, maybe your department will have to oversee this because of the information they're gonna, you're gonna have to give to Dan's crew in some way. So I think that maybe it might make sense, you guys make that decision, but I think it might make more sense being spearheaded, uh, 'cause you've got all the, the accounts and, and all the information. So hopefully, we can get that underway. The, uh, a couple of the other things, uh, a couple announcements. The, uh, Cecil County Public Library is, is gonna have one of their fundraisers, which is actually called the Crab Claw, a craw, on Saturday, September thirteenth, from eleven to four, and this is actually in Northeast, so I'm giving Northeast a little plug here again, I'm gonna give them a couple tonight. Uh, but the, uh, the Crab Craw is, uh, you pay, I think it's forty dollars, forty dollars a person, and you get to hit all the local restaurants, and you eat a lot, a lot of different crab meats. It's, uh, pretty unique, but I did tell them I would, uh, share with my good friends from Northeast, uh, a little plug for them. Uh, along with that are, uh, friends from Chesapeake City and dropped off the Conquer the Bridge Walk, which is on October fourth, uh, thirty-dollar registration fee, uh, pre-registration is twenty dollars, and, uh, if anyone would like, uh, to walk across Chesapeake City Bridge, uh, all the funding, uh, uh, let's see, I'm not exactly sure who the funding goes to, benefits, uh, projects in Chesapeake City. So it's a, it's a nice, unique little project if you wanna actually walk the bridge. Let's see, those were those two items. And, uh, I think if everyone read the Cecil Wave this morning, I actually got a phone call from, uh, Cheryl Maddox. Uh, she mentioned that the, uh, Cecil County just, uh, was fortunate to get a Bass Masters, uh, fishing tournament in Cecil County. It's an elite tournament. Uh, anyone that follows the Bass Masters Tour, this is, uh, one of the eight top events. It's not the granddaddy of them all, but it's, uh, one of the top eight. Grand prize is a hundred thousand dollars for first place. They pay out fifty places, uh, and ten thousand dollars to the fiftieth-place person. It's gonna bring, uh, they're estimating close to thirty thousand people into Cecil County for that week of August thirteenth through August seventeenth here in the county. So I know it's gonna have an impact on our town from the hotels that we have, but also, uh, I think that we're gonna reach out a little bit and see how we can have some type of, uh, uh, maybe be part of that function. But it's, uh, the town of Northeast will actually benefit very greatly, uh, with this also, but I think that we could, uh, maybe share in that in some way. But you're gonna have, uh, professional fishermen here, and it's, uh, those guys like to spend money. They estimate it's gonna be, uh, an impact of over two million dollars to our county for that one week that they're here. And, uh, let's try to get it. August, August thirteenth, uh, through August seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. And I understand the town of Elton has a little boat, maybe we, we might get in it and, uh, try to win that. But that's all I have. Uh, John, Earl, do you have anything tonight? Charlie, any, uh, new business?
What did we ever decide upon, upon the meters, or left still, um, in process?
I, I don't think we've decided anything, uh, on the meters. I don't think that we've hired a, uh, enforcement person yet at this point. Uh, so I, I-
It's in limbo.
I think everything's in limbo. I think, uh, kinda my feeling, the meters are on vacation here for another week or two, and, uh, I think we do need to make a decision on this here real soon.
The question is, how's the situation without, uh, the, uh, the employee working? What's, what's the situation?
No complaints.
One of the comments was. One of the comments was. Let it, let it, let it play its, play its role out and see what happens in the next thirty, sixty days.
Yeah, but my suggestion is keep, keep going with what we're presently doing. I mean, I walked up and down Main Street, uh, once last week, and I was out there, uh, twice this week, and, uh, haven't had one complaint from, uh, either a citizen or business owner about what's going on parking. Uh, I was, uh, dropped somebody off over at Fisher Court, uh, earlier today, you know, so it was a little difficult to park, so later in the afternoon, still early, I mean, one, between one and two, there's plenty of parking.
I know there's, there's meters all the way up. There's no meters down on this side though, right? There's no, there's no meters in our, our business district in front of, like, Lions or Minnehans or anything like that, so it... What else does that, that enforcement guy, he, does he go to Walmart and enforce handicap parking?
Yeah, he goes to Walmart, the malls, a couple of neighborhoods where we have, uh, handicap parking spaces, and he does two-hour parking.
I think that was the point of contention, wasn't it? With the two-hour thing, moving it to three hours or something like that, that was really the, the point of contention.
Yeah.
'Cause it's not, it's not the turn any type of business or anything like that downtown, 'cause there isn't any, any meters downtown.
I, I think we, uh, try to figure out what we wanna do with it by, uh, maybe the next week, or just leave it as it is?
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather hire somebody, honestly. I would.
Have someone, uh-
I would.
Okay.
Yeah. Only because, not just, uh, downtown, but if you, if you have other communities, then, then you're gonna have to send out the police department out there. We're shorthanded in the police department to begin with, you know, so then you're paying somebody top dollar to go out there to handle a parking issue instead of the real police work that's going on, when he's a part-time employee, right, the enforcement officer? So you don't have to worry about venues or anything like that, and maybe what we should do is take a two hours, a three hours, or something like that for, for the, for the businesses downtown. It, it just, that makes more sense to me, but I'm only one vote.
Well, it, it makes a lot of sense. I, I, my, my theory on it was, everything on North Street, and if you went from Bridge Street to South Street, I wanted to make it a three-hour zone. And, uh, everything that was, uh, I'm gonna say Attorney Row, heading, uh, heading out, uh, East Main Street, uh, I felt it could stay at a two-hour number, but the business district, we could make it a three, change it from a two to a three. And I hate meters, you know, I just hate meters, and, uh, I don't know if we want, I, I think that's kinda where, do we get rid of the meters? Do we keep the meters? Do we enforce?
Well, we have to get rid of the meters anyhow because they're getting old.
They're old.
Some of them are breaking down, can't get parts. I mean, that was the other thing too, so what's the, what's the next investment, return on investment if we, if we decide to go that way? Do you do just a kiosk? I know Newark, you know, they just do a kiosk where you go and you, you pay, and then you gotta put the, the thing in there. Maybe that's a simpler way of doing it, doing it that way, and you, you still keep it around the hospital, you still keep it in some of the areas, 'cause then the other problem is how much the revenue, I know revenue's going down on that, but you're still looking at twenty-two, twenty-seven thousand dollars, somewhere in there?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three places.
All right.
That's just parking, that's not the fines?
Correct. That's just parking. And then what was the, what was the total for the fines that we haven't collected yet? I, I, what sticks in my head was seventy. Am I wrong?
Yeah, that bomb I thought that's short is seventy-sixty-seven thousand.
Seventy thousand dollars, we're still waiting on that?
Well, we're waiting.
We're waiting and waiting and waiting. That money's somehow-
True, rather, so that's not right much, but we see-
Right, right, I see.
...after certain points, and then we won't be getting that.
We really need to talk about how to collect that debt.
Yes.
We, we need to collect that debt.
Maybe we can get John Downs to tell us how we can collect it.
Yeah.
Can you come up with some recommendations for us? All right.
So that's my two cents on that now.
Good, Charlie, you had it in.
And I have a question, Chief, I know we talked about that before and the human resources. You know, across the nation, the police are coming under fire for what's going on, and I know we have vacancies here in our own police department, and I know at one time in one of the meetings here, I believe the last one, Robbie, we had, we talked about our own diversity in the police staff, which we wish we had, and here we don't. I think as a matter of fact, Robbie used the fact that, you know, the Hispanic community, if they had a problem, you wouldn't have anybody that'd speak the language. A long story short, when we recruit, where do we recruit specifically, is the MML, which notifies all the municipalities that we have, um, vacancies, or is there a plan?
Uh, well, we use, uh, obviously, local newspaper, we also advertise over into, uh, Delaware area, News Journal, uh, colleges around the area, and I believe, uh-
We use MML?
Yes, we do, the whole state.
We use MML, and that goes out to the whole state.
Were, are there any instances where, when other areas and jurisdictions have vacancies, do the, do they send that information to you to alert you to that as well?
Well, if they have-
Right. Other surrounding jurisdictions, do they do the same, basically, to Elton or anyplace else, if they have vacancies?
Nah, I mean, they, we don't, we wouldn't, uh, contact another police agency to notify that we have vacancies in place versus they wouldn't contact us. They may contact us, we'll get the labor people.
Okay. Laura, can you tell me?
Yeah, I can understand on that. The other agencies also advertise in that same, um, magazine and news article stuff for police officers. So that's why we use it. First of all, it's free.
Mm-hmm.
And also, they advertise, you'll see all police, um, departments and other positions advertising there throughout the whole geographical area of Maryland with the diversity through that. So that's why we use it, because they, you know, to look in there for other positions, so there will be maybe police, um, academies in different other areas that will be looking in there, or people that will be looking in there for different areas. So that's why we advertise in it.
And when you advertise, is there an attraction piece or something you do to make people wanna come, or officers specifically, they wanna come to Elton as opposed to going someplace else, or come here for whatever reason, for whatever reason, for whatever reason?
Um, yeah, we-
Because when you're competing, you're, obviously, you want to put a carrot out there for somebody to come and get, and I just wonder what carrot you might use?
Well, um, we, um, do, uh, use the, um, the salary. We also use, um, other things that we feel that are beneficial, uh, to the organization. Um, we put down, um, usually, they like to see salary. They like to see the, uh, opportunities for growth and stuff like that, but basically, um, it's, a lot of people look at the salary. I think that's a big factor. We do include that, a lot of times they don't include that, and that is a big factor there. Okay? But, um, I was looking at some of the applicants that we are looking to make, uh, conditional offers to, and I'm seeing where that's coming in and seeing how effective that is, because we're always- Because we're always looking to include diversity and inclusion in all of our recruiting.
Very good. Ma'am, I will recognize you here in a minute when I want to open up the floor for the call. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. DJ, you have any to hand for us?
Yes, sir. We got a book.
No. I just got a chapter. Chief, why would anybody come to Elton or work for your police department? And that's, that's really what it comes down to. And I called you the other day because I had an issue in our neighborhood and we had two police officers that, again, a former principal of Elton was actually involved in talking to that one police officer. I mean, you guys, in my opinion, you're always going to have, I saw something that was, you know, half of, one percent of police officers have issues. And I do think that we have fantastic police department, and that's not smoke. But why should somebody come here to us? I was looking, and I left it at home, the stats that you showed us the other day is that we're getting six hundred calls per month, right? We're, we're, a week, that's right, a week. So, we're blowing everybody else out of the water, but we're still paying, from what I saw in there, roughly the same. So, we're asking our police department to work harder than our surrounding, our neighbors, for the same amount of pay. So, why would somebody want to come here?
There's a lot of opportunities, do a lot of good police work here.
Oh, true. Okay.
Bottom line, if you're a, if you're a young man or woman and you're looking to do police work, you don't want to work in a big city, you'd rather work in a municipality, this is a great place to come and work. You know, there's a lot of things that go on in town. I mean, it may not be the best thing to say, but there's a lot of things that go on here that don't go on in other municipal jurisdictions of similar size. And you, if you're a person that wants to do police work, you can come here and do it. These guys will drive around the car.
I think one of our selling points, adding to that, but maybe when we advertise, we have probably the, one of the finest pension programs in the state of Maryland, maybe. I don't know. You know, I'm just throwing that out there, but it's a great program.
And the fine benefit pension, which was achieved several years ago, the town supports, is a great thing. And it is a big attraction. Health and medical benefits, big attraction. Pay vacations, sick leave personally. I mean, those are, those are things that unfortunately, sometimes younger guys coming on to the job, they don't initially look at all those things, but they got a head on their shoulders. Mayor Williams got a head on their shoulders. They look at that and that's, that's a big, that's a big draw.
Laura?
Also, we redirect them. Everything is redirected to our website. That's why we have the website. So, we can put so much more on to that. And everything is redirected to our website. So, we can utilize that.
Have we ever tried like monster.com or Headhunters or, I mean, I guess?
We do Career Builder. We go along with, anything with News Journal, we get a hold of Career Builder, then they go onto OnD. They do all of the different monster.com, everything. But they primarily deal with Career Builder.
Okay.
And then through that, it gets filled into all the different websites. Because honestly, now, everything is on, is on the internet, pretty much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I don't know who was talking about it. It was, it was right after I got back from vacation. But I had heard somebody talking about, we had an issue with a grant that we got for police officers that we may have to pay back, or there was something to do with all of that because we don't, we have eight vacancies, is that right? And three of them were paid for through a state grant. So, where do we stand on that? And I just heard it, it was people talking about it and I just, I overheard it.
It's a department-adjusted grant for, to help offset the adding police officers.
Right.
But what we ran into is that we accepted money under this grant and we had vacancies. And they won't let you fill a vacancy with it. This is supplemental personnel. In other words, you filled your full complement of police officers, like ours is what, forty-something?
Right.
And you want to hire two more officers and you can use this grant. But if you, you can't use it to pay their salary if you have these vacancies. So, we have to respond to that. And I think Steve got another thirty-day extension for us to put together a response. But we're not sure what's going to happen on that. They classify it if you, if you accepted money and you have these vacancies and you can't justify it as a cost supplanted.
Right.
They won't allow you to do that. So, we, in the event that we're not successful in influencing or convincing the federal authorities that oversee this particular grant, that we did the supplant, then go ahead and pay it back, it's a hundred and some grand.
Payback or stuff, we just don't know what they would say.
So, it leads me to the next two questions. Why didn't we see it coming? And when are we going to find out?
Well, actually, it's all common, when we reduce our budget for FY15 from forty-five positions to forty-two, and I reached out to them to see what would be in order to not get it, it's the planning.
Right.
Like a response a year and a month later.
They didn't respond to us for a year.
Could have maybe corrected. And then they responded in terms of fashion. So, now I'm addressing it. And after a fact, after FY14 is already overlooked. That's still where we don't know where that went up yet.
Steve made me aware of this about a month ago. And I did see all the email trails and I can tell you, they did not respond to us in a timely fashion. He didn't notify them, to know very clear to me.
All right. And we're just still waiting for a response if we're going to have to do anything.
We respond.
We're at an airport. We have no response.
But we've been given an extension, which we respond.
All right, as long as we hire police officers, then we don't have to worry about it?
No, it's about FY14 years or past and how we prepare our budget for that.
All right. Trash cans, trash, grass clippings, that's what it is. Sorry, I'm trying to connect the dots. It's hard for my mind. Is Dan still here? There is Dan. Hey, I was, I was walking around the other day, my neighborhood, crazy rain last week, didn't get picked up. Looks hideous, just like every other, everybody else's neighborhood. But why can't, why can't we put them in trash cans and just bring them out on Wednesday? Why can't we put the grass clippings in a trash can instead of looking at waste management and spending, I can't even remember what, hundreds of thousands of dollars? Can we put them in trash cans and just roll them out?
This board can authorize putting it in trash cans at any point.
I thought, one of my neighbors said that they had asked at some point in time, and again, I'm going third-party type of stuff.
The only issue involved is the way we have the sucker, if you put something there which is suckable, it jams up. That's where we can't, we can't see what's actually in the trash. Well, if it was a regular, like if we managed to pick it up, they would dump everything that mattered, but the way we had it is...
So, I can put my grass clippings in a trash can, put it out there on Wednesdays. Because that's my neighborhood and VPW will, because then you don't have to worry about the rain, you don't have to worry about it getting wet. I'll keep it beside my house and then I take it out there and it's not laying all over everybody's curb and stuff.
But the trouble we have is if you can't do, if they put something underneath grass in the trash can, that's not very concerned. Then if it gets in the machinery, it's caught, that's very concerning.
So, you won't do it?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking?
Yes.
So, you will not do it? If I put it out there, you will not do it? Okay.
Was it the weight of the can? Well, we used sucker then, you're saying, to do all the grass clippings? Wow.
It depends if something else...
The issue with the wet grass, as he explained before, is that clogs the machine up. It does. Price up close right in. But if it's wet, it clogs it up and then they have to take the machine, actually back to public works and take the blower assembly and vacuum assembly apart, clean it out and then reassemble it and take it out again. That's why they don't do that. And also, so many people contaminate the clippings with rocks, soil, and what do you call those ornamental grass and everything? That clogs it up too.
Okay.
If it's regular straight grass, you're fine. But, and you would have a good point. Could you take the regular clippings and put it in a trash can? It would be a very feasible thing to do if you get everybody to cooperate and just do that instead of mixing other stuff with it because that machine...
But aren't we, aren't we talking about that with waste management to put it in a can, take it out there? And if there's something in there that's not supposed to be in there, then they don't pick it up and charge us twenty-five dollars?
They don't use that type of machinery. They'll use, they'll pick it up like they do any other thing. They'll pick it up and they'll dump it in their, in their bag and they'll compact it. They will use a vacuum machine.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Thanks. A while ago, I had talked about Comcast and I, Michelle had sent me a thing asking about a channel and I really don't care what the channel is. Where do we stand on Comcast and getting a channel for the town?
We contacted Chris Cover, I think he replaced...
Tom Worley.
Tom Worley, his government relations. And one of the different, back and forth, and everybody figuring out how we can...
Okay. Can you invite him in?
Yeah. Maybe we can invite him into a workshop, let's talk to him.
I'd like to.
Are you interested in televising the meeting or just simply doing what we're doing now? Putting it on a media like...
I would love to see it. I'd love to see it videoed and take our video and put on the Comcast channel.
Yes. Because we had looked into it before and it involved quite an elaborate outlay of expense to the town to do this, but I think it's a good idea to come in.
Yeah, I think, I think all we'd have to do is take the disc over to them and they would put it on there.
Even if, even if we don't televise the meetings live, you still have on a public channel, Talking to Wilmington on their public channel, it's funded by Comcast, it's not funded by Wilmington. And they get to pick stuff on there like road closures or, we're not going to be able to pick up the trash or the grass clippings this week or...
And that was the original question. I don't know if I can be...
But just, yeah.
News flash.
The town of Ocean City videos, their channels.
That's what I want to lead into on...
We'll get a Comcast, we'll get the Comcast guy in here.
Thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Wiseman sitting there back for last week, picking up the ball, or two weeks ago when I wasn't here and bringing up EDC. I appreciate that. Because every meeting, I talk about EDC. And I believe Comcast channel runs right into that because now you can ask businesses and say, say if it does cost us to make this live, then why can't we sell some type of advertising on the bottom of it? And I'm just thinking outside the box here to offset the cost of that. And then you would also have, you would promote this like Ocean City does. I was in Myrtle Beach and they had one specific channel dedicated to Myrtle Beach of Dick's Restaurant and Alabama Theater and this and that. And now you can promote businesses in and around town. But again, we need, we need an economic development center, we need an Elton development center, we need something for the entire part of Elton. You know, the website. We have a website, but it's not being utilized properly. And some of the things I want to bring up on that is, there's a parrot night on July nineteenth. Well, it's past July nineteenth. Why is it still showing on our site? The notices, I signed up for the notices to get notices. I haven't gotten notices for anything.
I can't wait for that one. I just know I don't...
Michelle, you're busy though, but that goes to my whole point.
Actually, I'm just, this is a very simple answer. Excuse me.
Go ahead.
When I did the news flash up for the road closures and so forth, what I needed to do was simply click our email subscriber sheet that was sent this year and I did it. And actually, I learned that from Cheney, too. So, I can do this from home, it's very easy.
But it's not just those things. It's also the car show down on Thursday night, or we're doing a Boy Scout of America Soapbox Derby thing coming up, or there's an open house at one of the churches, or there's something. I mean, the problem that I see right now is that it's not being utilized properly. And for us to attract any type of business, and when I say business, I just don't mean a couple of businesses downtown. I don't. I mean business. I mean jobs. That's what we need to do. And I'm here to tell you now, and a lot of us sitting in here are business people, all right? When they go and you look for a spot and they say, location, 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 right? All right? You're going to go to the town and they're going to take a look, see what we have. And we have to be professional on it. Now, I believe that I'm preaching to the choir to a lot of people up here. I do, and a lot of people out there. But at some point in time, we really need to dig down in the weeds here and get this thing going. We need, and Mr. Wiseman, you said it, you hit the nail right on the head. We need to hire somebody. But it needs to, in my opinion, and I'm thinking way outside the box here, is it needs to encompass park and rec. It needs to encompass an IT department. It needs to encompass Chamber of Commerce. It also, we need to find land for business to come in here to build. We need to reach out to the county. I mean, we need a huge system here. How is it going to get funded will be the next question. And believe me, I've tossed and turned thinking about that and I'm not quite sure. One of the things I'm truly concerned about is the CDVG grants. All right, we've gotten, how much, it was three million dollars or something like that over X period of time. In the last two years, it's been what, two million dollars?
You're talking about CDVG?
Yeah.
CDVG funds are targeted towards national goals with respect to housing and for low modding companies of that nature. You can't use it for promotional economic development and business development.
I completely understand that. I completely understand that. My question was, is how much money have we received in the last two years? Two million dollars? Is that about fair?
Four hundred and forty-eight thousand. We just were awarded and you add, who did for Bell Hill, two hundred and some thousand, probably six...
Let's say a million dollars just for...
Six, eight, eight hundred thousand.
I know, we're going to be...
Yeah, let's say a million dollars. Okay, but we got that from the state. The problem is, what are we doing to be proactive that we need to have these things done? What do we want to do since we can't reach out to the state? Because a lot of times when I hear, let's do this, the first thing that clicks in everybody's head is, how much grant money can we get? When can we be self-sustaining as a town of Elton that we don't need to reach out to the state? And the only way that I see that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is business, that we need to bring jobs in here. Now, how are we going to do that? And I think that's it. And Mayor, I think beautifying the town, a great idea, fantastic idea. But it needs to go a step further. It needs to. And we've talked about plans, I mean, you've talked about plans with other people...
Listen, my ears are all open. I can tell you this.
But right now, I mean, I really think we need to start laying the groundwork that we can't kick the can further down the road on this and, you know, let's talk about it again in October. And then it becomes January of next year and then all of a sudden, we're behind the eight ball again where there's other people, you know, fast forwarding. Perryville's got stuff going on. Little Old Port Deposits got stuff going on. You know, I mean, and we need something here. We need something desperately here. You know, so anyhow, I got a little off-topic on some of that stuff. Combining Facebook page along with our main page, I mean, I, when somebody wants to look up something, I instantly go to my phone. And how are we going to bring in the younger crowd into stuff going on?
Yes.
You know, and technology is a lot of it for me at least, you know, and a lot of my peers, it's technology. And we're missing the boat. Eight-track still plays, they still work, you still hear music, but now the new stuff is CDs and MP4s. So, where are we going to go and how are we going to get there is my question.
Well, listen, I can, I can say this. I can share with you, jobs is extremely important to this town. And I believe we do need to have a plan together to try to reach out and grab more of these jobs. I didn't really want to get into it too much about the facility station. But I've got my fingers crossed that we might be able to get it added to the map. I didn't really want to go there tonight because it's, but believe me, I can tell you, I am working every day for this town of Elton to try to create these jobs for our town. But I believe that we have to come up with a plan and I, and there's nothing wrong with getting us all together and developing what plan. I, you know, I said during the campaign that we're, I definitely would love to put several hundred thousand dollars toward economic development for our town. We can fund it, we're just going to know what, exactly what we want to target with it. And, and how is it going to benefit us as we move forward? And I think the home run is, we need to bring in, we need to bring in companies that's going to employ people. And along with that, that brings in the tax base force and of course, we know that they'll spend money in our town. It's just that, that rolling ball once we get that going. You know, you look at Newark, Delaware just turned down the facility for the, the. That was the, the appeal.
Data center.
The data center.
And I can tell you, Gene Minner made a phone call for us on our behalf to try to reach out and see if we could get something like that. Now, whether it be good, bad, or indifferent, we probably have every resident here, no to the data center. But we are trying when we hear those things. But years ago, I can tell you many years ago, I tried to get Cabela's to come into Elton. And it sounded kind of crazy, but Cabela's is a destination. And look where they ended up. They did come, they did come, not far from us, but they did come. But I truly reached out to Cabela's, I still have the letter that was sent to me and, and said that at this point, Elton's close to where we want to be, but it wasn't where they wanted to be. And you can see what happened. But I'm, I'm all ears. And I, believe me, we need to create these jobs and we, we need to entice these businesses to come here. And how do we do it? Creating a marketing plan to, to, to entice these businesses to come to Elton.
And who's going to do it?
I, I hear you loud and clear. I think, I think everyone up here agrees that we need an economic development director. I think, I know I do. I don't know how the rest of the group feels, but.
Well, let me suggest, you said Aberdeen has an economic development person.
Habdi Bruce, Aberdeen.
Habdi Bruce. Have one of them or both of them, you know, workshop to come in and, you know, give us the gist of what they do as a start, as a suggestion at one of the workshops.
I'll do that.
And that can be a starting point, a launching point for the town of Elton to see what they do and what you have to do.
Anything else, sir?
Uh, no, I regress.
Alright, this is the time of the meeting, we're going to open up the floor to the public. I had no one sign in tonight. Now, what's going on here? But I'll recognize whoever wants to speak for Al or Long. Now, let me get this young lady, she was, you were waving, tell me your name and your, your address, please.
Hi, my name is Jazma Ha, I live six months up in Elton, Little Row. Right in the town of Elton. Just a little small thought.
Yeah.
First comment I want to make is that as far as the police officer go, I called up here several times and I came up here several times and I was told that y'all wasn't happy. Even though y'all got advertisement around and everything, I was told, just like I told her, I came up here. Also, the treatment of the female officers, these officer guys come on the scene, they pull up as an officer, have somebody already pulled over, they're disrespectful, they're being ignorant. And we noticed that as, what are we called? Civilians, as civilians, we noticed the treatment. Like if y'all want to do that, y'all need to do that away from the civilians. In your own little private little dormitory, whatever you got to do. Another thing is when I was in high school, I have another disability. But when I was out in high school, there was a fight and I was on a bus where a gentleman got on the bus claiming to be an officer and officer crew approached the bus. I was getting out, walking down for my family and my family was trying to meet me with officer crew and a gentleman tackled me from behind. I was maced, my hair was poured, I was kicked, hit and beaten. I even end up in the hospital. At this point, Mr. Gibbons was a part of the, out there high school where he actually seen that the person who lied, first of all, he wasn't an office, an officer. And second of all, he lied, I never once touched him. And it's like, it's a sad day when people, the citizens, anywhere, anywhere in the USA. So like the, the people that are supposed to protect and serve and have morals and dignity are just doing anything. I believe that something needs to be done because some of these officers are nice. They are. But it's other officers that are not nice and rude. And it's like they're, I don't know what's going on at home, but when they're writing them tickets or whatever, they transferring it to the people who already dealing with. And it's like, it's uncalled for. It doesn't have nothing to do with race. It doesn't have nothing to do with anything. It has something to do with that oath that you took to serve and protect this public. How am I supposed to believe that you're here to serve me and protect me if I'm the same one that's feeling harassed? How am I supposed to feel if I'm the same one that's feeling like you're treating me different? And then like I said, it doesn't have nothing to do with race for me. I don't really care for race because my mom is white. I'm just telling you from everything, my experience that I have been through with police. I, I just now had an experience where I had to tell the officer, like, you know, the cuff is too tight, can you please loosen them? I have a medical condition.
Well, why are you being arrested, may I ask?
Well, I, the, I wasn't being arrested. I had a friend call and I guess something was wrong with the registration. But they, they nevertheless, they did let me go because it was not my fault. It was my friend call, but they said because I was in that prison car. But it's just like the treatment, I don't know if you could suggest like a, a two to three week class for training where they can actually go through like, I guess, morals and etiquette or even greeting skills as far as how they portray themselves to people or how they come off to people that they're pulling over or they're stopping. Because it's like, if they have a bad day and I'm getting pulled over, it's like I'm having a bad day too because they're coming with an attitude and I'm not trying to be rude, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but they are coming very rude at other people.
Thank you.
Another thing is as far as getting people to trust you and getting jobs out there and notice, y'all need to start going to schools. There's a lot of people out with the high school, who does respect the law enforcement? Who does, who went off to become military people? And it's like they had built career their days and everything. I don't, I've never seen a police officer, I'm lying, Mr. Smiley always came around, always told that he was, they hiring and everything. But it's like, when I came up here to try to put in an application, I don't know if it's because of the way I look, because I did dress professional, even though my hair is red now. I did dress professional and I did come up here and I did say, what are the steps? And what can I do to be a part of out there police station? I even called up here and I was still told that there wasn't no hiring going on. They didn't need people and everything was okay.
Well, I would say this, that if you would like to apply for a job, come into our town during the business hours and, and meet with our HR department and fill out an application. It's that simple. So we should have never told you that we weren't hiring. But I would say to you that if you could come during our business hours of, let's say, 8:30 to 4:00, they'll send you right down to get an application and to fill it out for that position.
Okay, now, the next thing is like, can we get some classes, some training on etiquette and politeness? And just because it's not everybody.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
I'm just saying, in light of the incident that happened in Mississippi, which I can truly say, my, I was under the age when my incident happened. But if I was under the age, I mean, if I was old enough, I would have had a lawsuit because I had, I read this against the police and people was actually recording me being brutalized for something that I did not do. And officer, a man who got on a bus who wasn't supposed to.
But he wasn't even a police officer.
Yes, and that's what I'm saying. And no action was taken against this man still to this day. It's in my juvenile file record, but still to this day, nothing happened to that man when he was supposed to be locked up for impersonating an officer. I'm, I'm just saying, me personally, you understand how my, my rights was violated as a child? And I live with my sister, I didn't live with my biological parents at that time. So it was like my sister had custody of me and custody custody. So it was like whatever she can do. I'm just saying, a lot of people don't know their rights. And some people do know their rights. And if you do know your rights, you're getting harassed even more by the police officer. It's an incident where a young lady was in New York feeding a baby and breastfeeding a baby and the officer was like, you're about to get a ticket for being in decent exposure. And in the midst of that, it was like, he didn't care about the baby. He, he choked the mother up, the baby went flying and cracked the, the skull on the concrete. And you think the officer stopped to check on the baby? No, he was still putting the mother in handcuffs. And it's like, what conventions can we take so that we won't be like Mississippi? Or what conventions can we take so we won't have that incident in New York? Because even though these incidents are happening, it's not being televised or put on the meeting or even brought out there like that. So my question is, what reinforcements can we put in place now that we have issues going on down there?
Jasmine, you can give me a call, but you have exceeded your time. Give me a call, you know my number.
Yeah, there you go. Charlie, I appreciate that. And, and listen, your, your comments were well taken. Thank you. Mr. Lemon?
First thing I want to say is that I've been coming down here since about the first of May last year and I found it, I found it very educational, informative. It's democracy in action. And my question sort of ties in to DJ's. What are we doing to work with the schools to let them know? Like you talked about videos and all, that we can take up to the schools, to civics classes, stuff like that. Are we doing anything like that?
Well, you're asking a good question. I know that we're in the schools and, and I'll let the chief kind of answer that one, what, what we're doing as far as from the policing perspective with the schools. If, if you could.
Is that the question, where, was the police department doing it in the schools?
No, that's not the question. The question, the question is, is this is democracy in action. You see, I found this very interesting. I never paid any attention to what was going on down here until first of May last year. And I have a neighbor that urged me to come. At any rate, at any rate, I think it, what I see or what I'm thinking about, but you guys tell me, is that if you were video, videoing this and you went up to the, let's say, Elton High or Elton Middle and said, hey, why can't we do something in the civics class and show you these videos? Show you, show the students what's going on and, and how democracy really works in action? I think that.
I think it's a good class.
That makes something come alive and just not what you see in the papers or what you hear about or anything. This is a real thing and I, I find it very exciting. I would think that if, if, if some, if people from the town, and you know, some of you guys could go up and take a class and say, this is, here's, watch this. This is what's going on, this is how we answer the questions, these are the issues that come.
Excellent, good point.
When it comes to the education curriculum, if you want something in excess of what the school has to offer to the kids, you first have to go over and get permission from the superintendent because each of curriculums, whether it's biology, civics, math, they have to follow certain things throughout the school year and that's done statewide. So anything that's inputted beyond that, you have to get special permission. And I agree with you, a lot of things we do should be imported to the kids, but you know, it stops right there. So you have to go see the superintendent and you know, then she would, you know, assess as to whether or not that can be. And then she in turn would talk to them.
I wouldn't think that would be too hard to get permission to do something like that.
It won't be easy, but it's worth the go and see.
I mean, it's not going to cost her any money, so it shouldn't be a big problem. And, and like DJ said, maybe you have to have a little plan first. You talked about a marketing plan, but this would be, you know, government educational plan or something like that.
I do know, I, I involve myself with several programs that they do have up to school for as far as politics, Career Day, Professional Day. There's many times they, they open that up to people to come, individuals in their profession to come and give their highlight of what they do and how they, they handle things. Kids ask questions, I mean, I'm going there from 10 o'clock until 3 o'clock on certain days. And I'm just saying, they do have programs set up with the school inviting people, especially Professional Day and Career Day. I'm just, I don't know whether that touches base.
I'll leave it in your guys' hands, but I'm, I'm just saying, I find it very exciting and I never paid any, I'm repeating now, I never paid any attention to it till I started coming down here. And this is very educational. And, and I've, I've heard you, maybe Commissioner Gibbons, somebody here said some meetings back that, you know, we need more interest in these meetings. Well, if you're like me and you're not paying any attention, but if you, if you're back, you know, if it starts in the schools, starts with the young people, it'll grow.
I agree.
So I leave that in your hands, I'm making a suggestion.
Thank you.
I'll continue. DJ, I want to let you know, I got them.
Ah, that's, that's funny.
You guys, you talked about this tower business. When we get a tower painted, do, do we get a warranty for the work?
When you're. When you're warranty.
Should it be longer? I mean, if you, if you paint a tower, you can put paint on there that'll last 30 years. You can put paint on there that'll last one year, whatever. But it would seem to me that if, I didn't pick up on everything on this grant, $450,000 grant or whatever it is, but it would seem to me going forward that you don't want to turn around two or three years from now and find your, find your towers peeling.
We, we have a lot of experience with this. And normally, when we did the Blue Bowl Tower some years ago, I've been watching it and there was evidence of some corrosion on that. But that tower's been there over 10 years. Nobody would warrant a tower for 10 years. It's all your fortune to warrant.
And if I'm not mistaken, normally it's the workmanship that they're going to warranty for one year, but the paint itself is warranted by the manufacturer. So the, the paint manufacturer of that paint, and, and that paint's pretty expensive on the water towers, I'm guessing when I tell you this, it's probably a 10 or a 15-year paint. But I don't know for sure, but if there's a paint issue, then it would go against the manufacturer. But the workmanship of actually applying the paint, I think would only be a one-year warranty. But I know with my type of products representing, you know, I represent 3M and I know that with a lot of our products, the, the workmanship side of it is a lot less than the, the warranty of the product. But I don't know for that for sure, but I'm assuming that the paint manufacturer is going to warranty the paint a lot longer than one year.
Our engineers require a certain paint and I didn't look into the warranty on the paint itself, but the, the paint has to meet certain specifications in order to be used. But it's a standard industry-wide type of application and painting. It's not like something they do each time, it's standardized.
One of the other companies I represent is Valspar and it's a paint company. And I can tell you that when we, when we, when I have, sell my paint, we'll have paint that's five, 10, 15, 20-year paints, but we can't do anything with the person actually putting it on. So the guy putting it on normally gives a one-year warranty, but the paint itself will be, from the manufacturer's standpoint, if it's peeling off because he did everything right and the paint was failing, then I can tell you, we'll supply all-new paint.
Yeah, so the, the issue is that going forward, that you, that you consider the, the paint guarantee and, and you know, you, you guys just approved a contract and you picked the lowest number. Sometimes the lowest number's not the best number.
You're correct.
And if you get into the, you get into these contracts and all I'm suggesting is you'll be spending a lot of money, even if it's the state's money primarily, you'll still be spending a lot of money and you want, you want to have a good result. And so, enough said on that.
Thank you.
Where do we stand on solar panels? That was a great idea you had and I'm just kind of curious.
Actually, we're still waiting for a response from the solar panel folks to give us the proposal as well as, you know, and if you follow up question on the waste management that we were talking about earlier. We haven't got a response, well, we have got a response, they don't have our quote to us in any day. But we are still waiting on the solar panel and as well as the waste clippings.
Yeah, I'm surprised that waste management would take that long.
Vacations. I think it was vacations, I think he responded.
One of the issues with them is that they weren't in the business of picking up yard waste. So I think Middletown was the one they used. That was their first client on that. So I don't know, that's not normally their line of work. But recyclables and trash, refuse collection, that's their main business. And they branched into this yard waste thing. So I'm not exactly sure how, that may be some reason for them to hold up or why they're.
I think he said they're going to respond and the guy.
Oh, they will.
Yeah. We're on it, believe me, I'm on both of those.
No, I think that that's a super idea. You know, you pay more attention to it when these issues come up. And then I didn't, don't agree with the figure of whatever it was before, 50% or something. I'd say it's maybe 30%, something like that, of people that have, have that out. It seems to me that the right answer is to, is to get the quote. And the gentleman indicated you had to buy a container, $50. That those people that use that should pay for it. For example, I don't, I just cut the lawn and hell with what happens.
Twice a week, by the way.
Pardon?
Twice a week, by the way.
When it's raining, I do too. Peter Cowery, 105.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, it seems to me that one approach, maybe this isn't the, the only, certainly not the only approach. One approach is to, is to, is to get the quote, it's $50 for that. And then to look at those people probably should pay for the extra cost of pickup, whatever that costs. And it seems to me, you can bring it up now, this probably wouldn't start till next year anyway, it's too far into the season. But I'm just saying, to me, that is a very good solution to this problem. And it does look like, you know what, if you're riding around town and, and what you said at the meeting is absolutely true. People are off on the weekends, so they put it out there on Saturday and then it sits there till it's picked up. But I, it seems to me if somebody was in here five weeks ago or whatever it was, that somebody should call them and the same on the other thing, the solar, but call them and say, where's the quote? And just not sit around and, you know, watch the grass grow or whatever you do. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon.
I have, I have other things, but.
Ron?
I've not heard any mention.
Can you give you, give your name and address again, please?
Tom Wardrop, 242 Douglas Street here in Elton. I haven't heard any mention of a, an advisory school advisory committee. Is that still in effect here or no?
Advisory for what?
I'm, I'm not sure if we've ever had an advisory committee.
Yeah, they did. Well, I don't know if Elton did. When I lived in Providence, which is near Fair Hill, they had a parent advisory committee. I, I know for a fact.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't think.
Because I was on that committee. And when I'm asking, did that abolish her? But I, I've never heard any mention. But parents have say about their children with regards to what can be, you know, taught to them.
The structure of the parent advisory, the, the structure of the parent advisory committee has to be within the school, not with the government.
Well, I didn't say that, you said.
No.
I'm just saying that they, they.
We were trying to determine what you were trying to talk about, the advisory committee.
I don't hear any mention of it. You know, my kids are all grown, I mean, I got three grandchildren who go to school. You know, by the way, they're not going to high school, they're going to trace school. Four, I don't want to get into that. They don't want to get into that, but.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sherri Kennedy. I live at 315 S Bourbon Drive. I'm also president of our shovel run maintenance corporation. And I'd like to speak to the clippings issue.
Yes.
I have asked to, that the clippings, I did talk to the gentleman that picks them up and asked if I purchased from our corporation a container for each of the homes in our community. If we could put the clippings in that, it would make the community look much more appealing.
It would, it would, right.
And I was told no, that we couldn't do that despite the fact that we would incur the cost for the container. What happens is, not everybody knows on the same day, so the grass is in some form of dying. And then when the gentleman comes to pick it up, it doesn't, they're not sweeping up, you know, all the clippings. So it lays there and it's not attractive and it's throughout our entire neighborhood. So I'd like to see that we continue looking into this, that somehow, some way that the clippings can be sucked up out of a container so that it is put out a certain eye. If somebody puts something in it that doesn't belong in there, you can attach a fine to that. The most important thing, first of all, is to educate the community that what's happening with these clippings, what it costs the town to get rid of them. I believe a couple of months ago, you had talked about not picking up clippings, there was just talk.
No, there's never been any discussion of not picking them up unless, I would love to encourage mulching 100%. But I think that the game plan would be when we receive a, well, you know, let me start off by saying this. Nowhere else in the, in the, in the county, they're not picking up your, your clippings. The clippings are, are put back into the grass. We have had waste management come in here probably four or five weeks ago. And they're supposed to give us a proposal on picking up the clippings. And what they suggested is they would be in a container and that their truck would be able to pick the container up and dump it. Currently, the town of Elton, we don't have access to a, a truck that can pick up the container and drop it in. So there's weight issues that's along with it from our guys actually physically picking them up. So the, what we have to use is a sucker.
Yeah.
So when we use that sucker, when, that's the first time I've actually heard it tonight, was it when, because I felt.
It's about this big around.
Yeah, I'm, I'm right with you though. I, I would love to be able to put these clippings immediately in a container, whether we supply the container or you supply the container, because it's terrible. The streets look terrible, it's going into our storm drains. And that's another issue we're going to have here within the next year about all these clippings going.
The other thing, we're in New York community and we have to have forestation in our community. And my concern is, is if we don't do something, that the clippings will go into the forestation area. And that's not good either.
No.
So my point is just, I would like to really try to get containers so we could.
And, and Dan, is that something we can do on a trial basis over there? I'm kind of shooting that out there, is it?
We would volunteer for that trial.
Right, and, and I, I think your concern is, is that you're going to suck them, suck them up and that there's a glass bottle inside there, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
It could be vines, it could be ornamental grass, they love ornamental grass, they want that chance of outfits.
So when it's laying on the street?
We can separate it out, those, if we see it, then we know what to go for, then the rest, the rest is a mixed pot pickup and.
So once we, if we are able to educate everyone about the clippings. So the answer is, is that we're going to have to have a truck that's going to have to dump them all, everything into a truck, I think is what it's going to come to.
If it was a regular garbage truck, then it wouldn't matter, then you can't even want it.
We're going to work on it. I promise you, we'll work on it. Yes, ma'am.
Just, oh, pad 8137 Milestone, this goes to the grass clippings. I mean, the town has a schedule. You get the schedule every year, you know what day they're coming. If people don't want to see grass laying on their curb throughout their neighborhood, let them get their own can the night before your schedule be picked up, then go pour it out there. If it's pouring down rain, don't pour it out, save it for another week, it's not going anywhere.
That's too much common sense. She probably has the best idea. I rode through a community the other day and there's probably $400,000 homes and I see all this grass thrown out there and I said, I couldn't imagine anybody buying a $400,000 home and throwing grass in the street in front of their house. It's just incredible that people would do it.
And pray they don't have a garage stuff where everybody's driving through. And pray they're not having a garage stuff where everybody's driving through.
It takes, it takes. Great idea. To do that, I mean, you know.
And I know, Dan, because I've seen, I've seen this guy shovel stuff up. And to me, it's like, I don't, I don't understand why people put grass clippings out anyway.
Mr. Stork?
I just have a couple of questions. Tonight I heard Mr. Benner here suggest to the board about a valve. Now, is that valve very expensive, exclusive, or you didn't want to take any action here on this meeting?
No, I, I think.
And the reason I'm saying that now is that, you know, if you have expertise in here and to me, the board would be advisable unless everybody's up there and is expertise to act on that and don't let it get scuffled back in the next two or three meetings. If everybody, I'm not trying to force the issue, I'm just trying to tell you, the man has researched this and evidently it is needed, you know what I'm saying? What I hear, especially about depression.
The game valve is proceeding.
What's that, Dan?
Game valve, yes. To answer Mr. Stork's question, is Louis, we talked earlier in the meeting, he had to put that copper dam up there to him research it, so he knew what's at.
Who's that talking about?
I think he's talking about a directional valve in Bell Hill. That's what the camera's talking about. Or you're talking about the three, the three-inch valve on North Street? I don't know which valve.
I'm talking about the one that he suggested to you from town. That works automatically, so they don't have to keep going up there and doing the annual.
Yes, and I think that we're, we, we have gone through the process of, of, you've been manually doing it, correct, Ken? And, and I don't think we've seen an actual dollar amount on how much.
It's been grand.
$10,000 on that valve.
It's $9,300, right, right, six.
But you were trying to, correct?
We've been, yeah, doing it without it. But we've been doing it for months, it's about two months now.
Okay. I'm sure we'll take some action on this as we get a recommendation from the town ministry.
Now, that, that's just a point saying out here, listen. Now, here's another point. I've talked to you today earlier, Mary. Maybe refurbished jobs on these towers. Is it ever going to be a time when Elton's going to put a new tower up that would stop all the pressure you should use? I mean, they have towers that hold five, 10, 15 million gallons of water. And I think Mr. Benner, I don't know, he always has some pretty good ideas. But you know, you talk about pressure valves and all this, you can just see the expenses that you're going to and trying to keep these old towers in shape. Now, the reservoir up here, it's been patched two or three times. Mr. George has had problems ongoing with that, maybe that's a place for a new tower. Which flows automatically downtown, I mean, it's an actual grate downtown. And takes care of two problems with one. I know water towers are not cheap, I mean, I understand that. But it seems like that we've got to do something to keep up with the infrastructure and instead of keep redoing things, redoing the towers and stuff. I think it's time to look ahead, get out of the box a little bit and see if we can't improve on what we got, what we really need instead of what we have, is what I'm trying to say. Now, in a very rare old report that was done when I was on the board here, all these towers were supposed to be hooked up from one tower to the other tower with lines, water lines. In case one tower would be out of service or something like that, two towers could pick it up. And I can't think, La Croix report, that's a very interesting report and I still have it home if anybody would like to read it. You talked about millions and millions of dollars, but we've never done anything with that report. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Listenberg?
Talk, public's a bird, 1051, I'll wait. Talk about economic development, whatever. Seventeen years ago, the Elton Alliance was formed. And the people that, some of you on the board, some over here might remember, why it was done to accommodate someone that needed a job, if I remember correctly. The budget was $100,000 a year back then. For many years, it was $100,000, now it's down to $50,000. When you start talking about, you do workshops about economic development and how much it would cost to have an employee, a director doing this, find out how much a total cost has cost the town of Elton for the Elton Alliance over this 17-year period of time. Because it's a lot of money, well over a million dollars.
Thank you.
And I think that money could be better well-used with an economic development, like Mr. Wiseman said two weeks ago.
Yes, sir. Anyone else have anything?
Since they're talking to me, I might as well talk to you.
All right. Stand up and give your address.
Dave Wiseman, 140 Park Town. Just some question, do we get our invoicing out to the Color Vibe people yet?
Yes, yes, we did.
All right, thank you. And any update on the September 6th, any interaction with the town regards to the concert in the park on the 6th? More placing, maintenance, anything?
Well, no interaction with me, but I'm sure that we probably, on the September 6th with the.
We're going to have a detailed officers out there.
That's on our bill? I was told before that was on, that was going to be a self-sufficient, I believe, mayor.
Well, I know that, I know that there was a, a discussion of about 1,000 people. And, and I can, I know that we're going to have to provide policing for that.
One way or the other.
One way or the other. I certainly hope that we can offset some of that cost with the organization.
That just strengthens my point of the lack of communication and planning that went into this whole event. Somebody, once again, as a core structure, core person, bringing us all to the table, you wouldn't be surprised when a date with thousands of people showing up in the park. Our police force wouldn't be stressed to the max, public works as short, wouldn't be stressed to the max. And we could maybe pick another date, a better date, whatever the case may be. Hopefully, the event's a good event for the Boys and Girls Club. I'm not criticizing our organization whatsoever, please don't get me wrong there. But there's too many variables that have been skipped over, not just this event, in prior events. And probably moving forward, we need to get a little play to rain on.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Listenberg, we'll give you one more second.
I had to visit someone in the emergency room once today, one the evening. Low and very time in there, finally got out at 3 o'clock in the morning. As we were leaving, we were approached by one of the town's homeless begging for money and the use of a cell phone. Three of them were in the sleep, in the emergency room. And I took this patient, well, it was my son-in-law, from 8, 8 o'clock in the morning to get seated in there and I mean, to be treated by 12 o'clock at night. Place was packed with people and a lot of them really didn't need to be there, not a doctor, but I could see them. Two people were told to leave, two of the homeless were told to leave. When we were leaving at 3 o'clock in the morning, they were in there sound asleep. But my point is, when you're coming out of an emergency room or a hospital, anyplace else at that time of the morning, you don't need some of these homeless people there with their hand out begging for them. I mean, police patrol can't be everywhere, we know that. But they're out on the streets all night long.
Wow. All right.
Please, I just, when Jasmine, right?
Yeah.
When she was talking, she, she brought up military. Is there, is there anybody that we can reach out to as far as anybody that may be getting out of the military? I know they don't have MPs, SPs or anything like that anymore. It's under, I think it's Do, is it DoD? Anyhow, anybody that's getting out, that's already been through the academy and stuff, can we reach out to APG? Something like that?
Yeah, in fact, we just had somebody down there today. And just because they come out of military, they still need to go through police academy.
More qualified, I would think, right? And they're, and they're here.
Some instances, yes.
Okay, maybe, I don't think recruiters, you wouldn't be able to go to a recruiter, but if there's anybody else.
I think I had a job fair down in Aberdeen today. We had one of our folks down there for the duration of the event, so.
Very good. I have a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second?
Second.
Motion, we are adjourned.